Hello and welcome to the Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025 Selectments Meeting. We're going to open up with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, David O'Leary, was being anticipated for the parent. And Tuesday, Republic, the mission stands, we're on the ancient underdog. Anyway, this is only when you're deliberating and you have said it's wrong.
Thank you. So to open up the meeting, we're going to have a special presentation on the Route 1 Corridor Study. We have representatives from VHB Consulting and Maine DOT. They will be providing updates on the discussions that have occurred regarding active transportation, including bike and pedestrian connectivity. Between the Route 1 Corridor and the Wells Transportation Center since the last public meeting on Route 1 Corridor. We're going to step over here and we're going to watch the presentation with you both.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tony Grande with VHB. Also, what we hear tonight is Marty Ruh with the Maine DOT. Going to do a brief overview of the connectivity study that we've completed as an additional study as part of Route 1. So the Route 1 Study looked at three major components. Improve active transportation opportunities throughout the corridor. Traffic and safety improvements. And other amenities throughout the corridor. As a result of that, expanded sidewalks throughout the whole study area was one of the things that we provided. But one of the other things that we discussed was future connectivity to the Wells Transportation Center from Route 1. York County Community College and other locations as well. So this is the study area that that we looked at. It includes Sanford Road. You could see the orange circle there. At the top of the screen, that is the area where there's existing sidewalk. We're looking to replace that sidewalk, reconstruct that sidewalk, make it a little bit wider, six feet wide. And then we're going to add sidewalk on Sanford Road. From that point where it exists today, up to the intersection of Chapel Road. In addition to that, we look at either adding sidewalk or a multi-use path. Some type of connectivity from Route 1 along Chapel Road. All the way up to the intersection with Sanford Road, then along Sanford Road up into the Wells Transportation Center. In addition, as I mentioned, we also looked at connectivity along College Drive into the York County Community College. And then also, is there any opportunity to connect directly from the college? Down to Route 1 through some existing access points that they may have. So as I mentioned, we looked at two options. One was a sidewalk with a widened shoulder. Another was multi-use path that would be 10 feet wide with a four-foot separated grass strip. Or some type of median there separating it from the roadway and a narrower shoulder, two-foot shoulder. When we went through the study, we came up to the fact that it seemed to be the technical advisory committee members all agreed that the 10-foot wide path with the four-foot separation made the most sense. It was a better facility for providing access for both bicyclists and pedestrians. And it was separated from the roadway a little bit more. So that seemed to make the most sense. So we looked at, as I mentioned, these are the kind of locations that we looked at. And some costs there that that came out of the study as well. One of the things that we also did was look at presented, we presented this whole study to the York County Community College as well. They seem to be very much in favor of doing something like this. They have some other plans that this would fit in pretty nicely with. So they were very much in favor of of what could happen here. So these are the plans. I'm just going to kind of skip through them again fairly quickly. We can ask any questions you want at the end. I know there are some other things on the agenda tonight that people probably really want to talk about. So this is the location at the Wells Transportation Center. So it would go along that the side of the existing drive, access drive there. And then go along that same side of the roadway along Sanford Road, Route 109. It would then proceed underneath the turnpike. Come across the, come up that hill. And you see the orange area there in the lower part of the graphic. That's an area where we would actually be shifting the lanes of the roadways, narrowing them up a little bit. And providing some access on that side that will allow us to add a barrier onto the existing bridge to provide separation so that people would be safe riding or biking along that area there. It would then come down to along Chapel Road. And we'll also see this other line here. We'd also looked at an alternative along Crossing Road. That, you know, people could possibly do, but I think that the 10-foot path along the main road and chapel would make sense. And again, this is something that will be looked at further. This was just a conceptual study. Continuing down Chapel Road. Moving past Pettcock Circle, and I'll come back later. We have some, I have something that will show you a little bit of an example along that area as well. Proceeding all the way down on Lower Quoto down to College Drive. Again, staying on this side of the road, the I guess that would be the southerly side of the road. And then proceeding all the way down tying into the intersection with Route 1. And as part of the Route 1 project, there's also a proposal to add a traffic signal at the Chapel Road intersection as well. Which will also help that crossing there as well. This is the path along College Drive. So you can see that it's coming in on the northerly side of that, sorry, the easterly side of that intersection of that roadway. And then as it proceeds down, it would as you, as you get to the intersection where it takes that left-hand turn coming along College Drive into the campus. We had a crossing there. There's also probably a good opportunity to add a cross end somewhere in this vicinity here. Or the campground area for that park. I think that would allow people to walk. And again, the whole idea here was maybe reduce the amount of vehicles that are on the roads. So if people have an opportunity to do something different, then hopefully they will take that up to them. And then we switch over to the other side of the roadway as it moves into the campus. And as it comes into the campus, it would either utilize the existing sidewalk area. Again, we haven't quite finalized this yet. And I think further conversations with the college would help to determine that. We also looked at potentially, as the top photo shows, going straight along the back of the college. And maybe going through the woods for a portion of that. So that's something else that would be looked at further on. And then, as you see here, on the bottom part, looking at the existing access road along the backside that goes out to Route 1 towards the Walgreens in that area there. Bearford Tied Road, that vicinity. And this is, as I was mentioning earlier, that there's an opportunity to possibly look at putting a portion of that through the woods. And this is the sidewalk extension from Chapel Road down to the existing sidewalk at this location here, reconstructing that. And like I said, widening it all the way down to Route 1. It's connected to Route 1. So I mentioned that, you know, we had an example to show you what it could look like. But this is what that area at Pettcock Circle looks like today. And this is what it could look like in the future with that shared use path. So the project timeline. This is where we have kind of this project started in October of 2022. We've been at it for a while. We've had several meetings. The last public meeting we had here, we had, we had it right here, actually the open house for a while, and then the public presentation right here in this room. Since that time, in October, that was when the town suggested that we do this additional study, which we did. And at the same time, the DOT and the town had collaborated on a build grant. Which we had supported on that as well. And then January 2025, the town provides a letter of support to move forward with that. And then in February, when the work plan came out for Maine DOT, this project was included in the work plan. And again, I think that really is, talks a lot about the support that the town provided. So when, when the town was willing to provide that type of support, that's when the DOT said, you know, we should move this forward. So kudos to you for doing that. And then last month, the RFP went out for design work. And in June, now this month here, we will actually be starting the design on this and moving it forward. So so with that, you know, the, the process itself. Because Wells is the type of community that it is in the summertime. There's not going to be a lot of survey work that can happen. For quite a while. So that work will likely happen in the fall sometime with the winter and into the spring. So we won't really be able to get into some real design work for a while. But work will be happening, trust me. And as, as that progresses, we can make sure that we're communicating with the town on the progress being made. But we probably won't be back for a meeting like this, or even an open house for a while. Just so that everybody is aware of that. But we will be working on it. I'm excited about it. The DOT is excited about it. And I know that the town is excited about it as well. So I know that you have other things going on, but if anybody has any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah, you guys still, so I don't know if you've made any decisions about some of these intersection redesigns? Because we're on one of the streets where the original plan, we wouldn't be able to get into. We could get out of our street, but not get back into it. Has that been?
So are you talking about on Route?
Over by Route 1 in which where the mobile station is, where the seed mist is.
Yeah, so like you're saying, where, where some of the raised median aisles were.
Yes.
Yeah, those are, those are still being proposed. But again, as the design moves forward, there, there could be tweaks that happen as, you know, as we talk about things and we get things down to more detailed design.
Yes, Annie Murray, I just how will we be, how will we be informed that you're doing those tweaks? So we know when, come and find out what's going on. So that's our concerns or?
We would probably come out once we have the design on top of actual ground information. Right now, all we've had to use to date is aerial photography. So again, it probably will be a lot, possibly you know, next June, before we're able to come out with some good information. And be able to, you know, receive good feedback as well. Yes.
I'm over the moon with what you've, you're proposing here. I was nervous about, you know, whether it would be a sidewalk or a wider path. And I'm really glad you went that route. And especially over the bridge, putting some kind of barrier there is going to be super. When I worked at a deli in town, one of my coworkers told me that when she took class this year, she would take the train from Bedford into the train station, and then she'd walk to the community college. And I know that there are a lot of people in town and in the community that don't have a driver's license or can't drive for whatever reason. So this is hopefully going to make a big difference for people like, like Lenson.
Thanks. I agree. I think it will. Not only for them, but even just, you know, with the corridor itself. Once, once the improvements are in place and some of these connectivity options as well. People that are especially down on the southern end of the border, people that are in a hotel and want to go somewhere. They really don't have any option other than to walk on the road. Or, you know, take a vehicle. So hopefully there'll be other options that people will be able to take into account.
Of course, Chase. And now that they're doing the train station, they're doing it over the walkover platform. Have you, we've got a way to, safe way to get over the tracks?
Yes.
Part of going from the tracks to the college to connect the sidewalk, that way it would be a lot shorter walk.
It would be. And that was, somebody had brought that up. We didn't look at that. That wasn't part of, you know, what we were looking at. But and that would, you know, if something you know, it's really about property. You know, and, and is there an opportunity to work with a property owner to provide an easement or something like that? That would be fantastic. And then maybe something, you know, could be looked at. But I think that right now, the access across the other side of the tracks is really only to get to a platform.
Right.
So not, and they do not like to have pedestrians crossing that track.
If you could go over the top, stairs down would be awesome.
Yes.
The intersection of 109 and Chapel Road, as you're coming from the Transportation Center eastbound. Is there any possibility to put a turning lane on the right-hand side? Because there's a bit of a bottleneck there and people end up driving through the weeds.
Yeah, and I don't know if you might know that this plan showed a little bit. It may not. Yeah, so we, we have not shown that at this point in time. Again, what we were proposing was sidewalks here, but that is something, you know, that maybe as the project moves forward. I, I know that in order to make that happen, we would definitely need to take some slimmer, at least of this.
I think that then belongs to town. That prior to the bridge being built, that road went, I think it connected to Depot Road. And there's actually a barrier that's still up in the woods there from when it was changed over years and years ago.
Okay, I'll note that. Make sure that we consider that.
And would you that road, it'd be nice if you knew it over, I drive car. Making that corner right there is a pain now. Put a sidewalk in there for that. Do that, you'll have to take go to, at least where the town, that was a pretty wide intersection years ago, but making that turn with a truck is hard now. I've got the cars that are coming off. Or, definitely.
Bye, yes. Cheryl Mills Wells. Scott, thank you for that question because that was one of the things I was going to look into. Back in, I believe it was 2019, a presentation was made here at the college after a traffic study had been done, looking at changes on Route 109. Widening that intersection was included in the list of recommendations. Along with the one piece of it that has been accomplished, which is placing a permanent light at 9A and 109. And there were some other pieces in that study that were proposed for 109, and that was included in it. So we might not look at that. Let me take sure it was 2019.
Thank you. Yes.
When you talk about a multimodal mobile path, I envision travel surface.
It would probably be paved. Yeah. Probably be paved.
And maintain through the winter because then the college generally.
Yeah, again, that would be something that would get worked out with the town. Yeah. But that may be like the second idea. Anybody else?
Yes.
In this study, one of the things that was talked about greatly, and I didn't like, was down at the Harbor Road area. We're going to put a new light up. Force traffic down that
Yes.
small neighborhood.
Yeah.
South Street. Have we looked at that closer?
We have. But again, you know, we're, we're trying to that, that's the reason for doing that is to try and address a high-crash location. That's the meaning you could put.
On that same subject.
Yes.
On that, what would it's been studied before, back when they changed that intersection, maybe to building all the operations that went there could be here to that. Could you not move that light, leave the light at 109, put a second light like like in front of the moles, the gas station there, Browns? So that it's on at Harbor Road. So that whole section from Harbor Road to 109 would be a dead section during a red light or a green light. And at the same time, that would allow for when the fire trucks need to leave, they can get all red lights come on, may have an open intersection to come into, whether they want to go 109, Route 1, north-south. And it would just basically move the light down.
Yes, it more has to do with the traffic movements at Harbor Road. And with the proximity of Sanford Road intersection.
If you moved it down, Harbor Road would come out.
You're saying, you're just talking about moving the traffic light down.
Just move the light down. So that light stays at 109, a second light down. You see it all over the place. You see it all over the windland. Where you have an open intersection like that, each lane takes their own turn to go.
Yeah.
So then they can come out off of, of Harbor Road in front of the cars that are instead of trying to slide over into traffic, those guys are going to stop.
Yeah.
You know, back down until they, yeah, they pull in. It would just be a big intersection.
No, I know exactly what you're talking about. The kind of intersections that we try to avoid. No, exactly. Exactly. But again, we, I'll write it down there and we'll, we'll, you know, consider when, as we start to move forward. Anybody else? If not, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Just want to make sure that we thank Marty DOT. He has been a huge champion for us in our community. Marty and Tony both have worked so closely with us and we as Tony alluded to, we had a nice Zoom session with Mike Fisher and Chris Burbank from York County Community College. But Marty's really helped champion this, and I think that's reflective on the community as well. As he says, it's a generational opportunity for us. And so I think a whole lot of nice things are going to happen over the next couple of years, it looks like. And thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, next up, we have a special presentation. We have Bryce Waldrip and Marilyn Stanley of the Historical Society of Wells in Agunkwith. They will present on the upcoming Marquis de Lafayette event on June 24th, 2025 at Wells Junior High School. How you doing? That'd be great.
Good evening, members of the select board. There we go. Good evening, members of the select board. I'm Bryce Waldrip, the director of the Historical Society, and I'm joined by
Marilyn Stanley. I'm on the board. I'm about on the chicks crossing room.
And my top hat just arrived, so I'm going to put it on now. So very excited to share with, with everyone tonight, and of course with the select board. The Marquis de Lafayette is coming back to Wells after 200 years. So as many of you know, the Marquis de Lafayette is a very beloved French very young French general who participated in the American Revolution. At 19 years old, he traveled to France against the wishes of the King of France at the time, and was commissioned a two-star general in the Continental Army. Quickly earned the respect of George Washington, participated as a member of his staff. Joined in a number of Revolutionary War battles and was actually led troops that held back Lord Cornwallis so that American and French reinforcements could arrive in Yorktown. Ultimately leading to the Battle of Yorktown and the successful end of the American Revolution. Very distinguished leader, became a very beloved hero here in America. And 50 years after the revolution, then President James Monroe invited the Lafayette back to America for a number of things, both historic visit back to America, but also to help lay the cornerstone at the Bunker Hill Monument. The Marquis spent more than a year touring the United States, traveling 6,000 miles, visiting all 24 states, including the state of Maine. During this time, he stopped right here in Wells at lunch at the Lindsey Tavern and greeted people outside on his way through two points north. So the Friends of Lafayette, which is a nonprofit organization, is recreating and already has started to recreate this historic tour. It started last year. They are stopping every place that the Marquis stopped on the day at roughly that same time. Traveling that whole 6,000 miles. It's pretty incredible. So we invite you to join us on Tuesday, June 24th at 1:30 PM in front of the Wells Junior High School. When the Marquis will come back to Wells. We have a fun program planned. Historical Society members will be there. Hopefully all of Wells, you're all invited. We hope you'll join us too. And we're also hoping that members, a member or members of the select board or other representatives of the town can join us. The Marquis will actually make a formal, semi-formal brief speech. It would be great if a town representative could respond and welcome welcome the Marquis to Wells. That would be really nice. We also have a Pfizer drum duo lined up. There will be impressions. There will be cake. Lafayette had a very favorite cake he had when he visited, and we have the recipe. And somebody I know can make it, and it came out phenomenal. So anyway, so it should be a lot of fun, and we hope you can join us. And just a little bit, the gentleman. A little bit, uh, the gentleman who is portraying Lafayette, his name is Michael Power. He's portrayed a number of historical figures. He's actually a retired civil defense intelligence officer. Having served over thirty seven years in foreign engagement postings, including working in the US Embassy in Paris. He's fluent in French, uh, and in two thousand and six. Upon nomination by the French Military Mission Embassy of France, he was decorated with France's second highest order of chivalry. So really a phenomenal person and dedicated, uh, Lafayette historian enthusiast. And again, you can come in costume. Um, I only have my top hat. The rest of the costume is on the way, but again, should be a lot of fun and, uh, hope you can join us. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. All right. Next, we have municipal officers workshop business public hearings. First of which is a public hearing on the comprehensive plan.
Mike Livingston can see that.
Thank you. I just wanted to get a little history on the comp plan process to date. It's been, uh, quite involved over five years in the works. Uh, the original ordinance for. Probably the establishment complaint committee was passed in November twenty nineteen. Uh, since then, there've been many, many meetings. Uh, there were a couple of sessions where no activity occurred during COVID. It was about a. Nine month respite during that period. Uh, there was also a. Uh, point in time where ten months, twenty five, all the state reviewed the plan for consistency with their state statutes and their regulations. So five plus years, but some of it, uh, was where the plan was being either a hold or being worked on by the state. Some of the last occurrences were public hearings that were held. Um, also there were multiple workshops from the board of selectmen and the complaint committee to make some revisions to the plan. Uh, those occurred in twenty twenty three through twenty twenty four. So it's, it's been quite a long process, many meetings. Uh, the goal of the comp plan committee and ordinance was to take the two thousand and five plan and update it. And that's what was worked on and part of the ordinance required that the format of the comp plan would be the same. Additions, changes could be made. Uh, those changes have been available for the public viewing since. May two thousand and twenty four, I believe, and both a clean version and a strikeout version as required by the ordinance. Um, because it's been, you know, extended process, the town has gone forward to be the ordinance changes. That are both compliant with the two thousand and five plan currently adopted by the town and with the proposed comp plan. Um, remember, actually, this June meeting, I think we had fourteen ordinance items. That were up for review and all got passed by the voters. Uh, there was a moratorium in place for almost a year. On water scale developments, the town has supported the. You, uh, the group line quarter study that was just presented and will impart tonight. Uh, so many aspects of the comp plan, as I said, well, the two thousand and five company, and you had the updated comp plan, the town has gone forward. Uh, this process tonight, we get public carrying on it. Could potentially be the last public hearing prior to it being put on the ballot, uh, after the public hearing. The worst likely, I think, are tasked to consider when it might be put on a town ballot in the future. That's the next step right on. But it's, it's, I guess it would be a full six years, um, since the ordinance passed if it was to be placed on the, with a valid. But that's just, uh, some background history and. And, um, that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Mike. All right, at this time, we'll open up the podium to anybody that would like to speak at this public hearing regarding the comprehensive plan. We ask you to come to the podium, state your name. Um, I would ask just because I think we only have the college for so much time tonight, if I'm not mistaken, and we try to keep comments around four to five minutes on this particular public hearing. Um, at this time, we'll open it up. Would anybody like to speak on this? All right, seeing none.
I move to close the public hearing.
Probably, uh, we'll move into discussion, I would say.
Okay, well, that would be a special.
Yeah. Well, if you, maybe a motion to close the public hearing and then we'll have discussion.
Okay, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, all in favor? Five, sorry. We're gonna put this forward to November.
Yep. From the, um, special town meeting in November.
You have a special town that? Oh, we have a motion.
I move to put the comprehensive plan before the voters for determination at the special town meeting in November twenty twenty five.
Second. Five zero. All right. Next, we have, uh, town of Wells, two oh eight Sandberg Road, Wells, application for a mass gathering permit for the Harbor Fest Family Festival to be held on July twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. At Wells Harbor Trinity Park. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none.
I make a motion to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero.
So everybody knows that the, uh, Founders Park Committee will be at Harbor Fest again this year with the dump tanks. We're looking for volunteers or victims. If you would like to be a volunteer, please say it, let me know, and we'll put you on the list of this life on last year.
Yeah, it was. All right, next we have Philip Breton, DBA Breton's Charters LLC, sixty eight Summer Street Wells, application for a commercial recreation business license. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none.
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Next, we have Great Works Properties, Inc., DBA Atlantic Pines Golf Club, four four five Clubhouse Road, Wells, application for a full-time beer, wine, and spirits liquor license. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none.
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Next, we have Great Works Properties, Inc., DBA Atlantic Pines Golf Club, four four five Clubhouse Road, Wells, application for a special entertainment permit. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none.
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Next, we have the Bitter End LLC, DBA Bitter End, two one one eight Post Road, Wells, application for a full-time beer, wine, and spirits liquor license. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none.
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Next, we have the Bitter End LLC, DBA Bitter End, one one eight Post Road, Wells, application for a special entertainment permit. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none.
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Next, we have Catch Water LLC, DBA The Fisherman's Catch, one three four Harbor Road, Wells, application for a full-time beer, wine, and spirits liquor license. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none.
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Next, we have Catch Water LLC, DBA The Fisherman's Catch, one three four Harbor Road, Wells, application for a special entertainment permit. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none.
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Next, we have Derek Peters, DBA Apex Charters, six Fleming Court, Kennybunk, application for a commercial recreation business license. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none.
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. All right, moving on, we have good news. Does anybody have any good news they'd like to share?
We'd like to share a little. All right, that sounds good.
A lot of appreciation to Rebecca and the, uh, Veterans Committee. For their great work in the Memorial Day Parade and Observance. Um, I think it spoke very highly of our community. When I looked at how the streets were lined, and I was absolutely amazed at how many young children were there. We had the opportunity to have small American flags that we handed out to virtually every child there, but it really made you stop and think about. Families and what Wells is all about. And those young kids coming and accepting those flags and waving them with a lot of pride. Um, so I thank Becca Veterans Committee, and while I'm thanking Rebecca, for those of you who haven't had a chance to see the June newsletter. Um, it just came out, um, June second, uh, on Monday, uh, but it came out on June second, and again, uh, visually stunning. Very, very informative, and I think for, if you don't see it, uh, get a chance to look at it, please do. I think it keeps everyone up to date about all the happenings in our community and looking back and looking forward all at the same time. So. Really some wonderful products.
Does anybody else have some good news they'd like to share?
I'll just go through the, um, on. This is a big week at the high school. Obviously, we have graduation on Sunday. At eleven. Hopefully outside. The way the weather is in Maine right now, I'm not thinking that's where we're going, so we might be inside, so it would be limited seating, obviously, if we have to move inside. But if you want to catch our graduates tomorrow night with the cooperation of Wells, Fire, Police, CMS, and Agunkwith. Uh, we'll be doing a parade of, uh, the graduates down Route one. And down to the playhouse and then turn around and come back and parade back. Uh, to the high, uh, to the junior high, sorry, from the junior high school to the. But if you want to see the graduates, uh, that's a fun night, and then we will graduate on Sunday, so. Uh, the parade is at six, six o'clock. So if you don't want to see the graduates, I wouldn't go to Route one tomorrow.
Thank you, Tim.
Yeah.
Anyone else before we move on? All right. Well, then moving on, we have opened to the public for the first time this evening. We have ten minutes set aside for general questions, comments, concerns. We ask you to come up to the podium, state your name. Please keep your comments to three minutes, um, so everybody has a chance to speak. Um, I will, I, I will just give everybody a heads up now. We're, we're probably not going to extend this one. We're on limited time. What we'll do is we'll go through the block of ten minutes with the three minutes apiece. We'll go through our business, and then if we have time at the end. There's still more that would like to speak. We can consider that at that time, so.
Thank you. How do you want me to stand facing you because you're only?
Well, just I, I, I think that that's fine, that just.
Just do this, okay?
My name is Cheryl Darian Mills, and I am a Wells resident. I'm going to read a letter sent earlier today to Chief Putman and copy to the Wells Town Manager and all the members of this select board.
Disgusting.
Dear Chief Putman. We are writing to express our sincere appreciation for your decision to pause the implementation of the two eighty seven G program. And the training of your officers in this task force agreement. We also thank you for meeting with community members and for the transparency surrounding the development of your protocols. This pause is a crucial opportunity for our community to engage in further conversation and research about the program's implications. While we acknowledge your efforts to address those concerns with thoughtful protocols, we remain apprehensive about this program's potential impact. On our town and local law enforcement. Our primary concern is the well-being and safety of all Wells residents, and we believe that strong community trust and cooperation are essential to achieving this. Many of our Wells law enforcement officers are deeply integrated into our community. They live here, coach local teams, volunteer for events like Special Olympics, and are familiar faces at summer festivals. These are trusted community members who have taken on the vital responsibility and of serving and protecting all who live and work and visit Wells. We believe that placing our local officers in the position of enforcing federal immigration policies. Introduces unnecessary risks to their safety and undermines the vital trust they have built in our community. We understand your intent was not to engage in proactive immigration enforcement. However, across the country, the entitlement of local law enforcement with federal immigration enforcement. Has led to terrifying incidents for immigration immigrant families and has eroded community trust in police departments. This erosion of trust can make it more difficult for victims and witnesses of crimes to come forward. Ultimately jeopardizing the safety of everyone in Wells. Given the heightened levels of fear and tension surrounding immigration enforcement, even the best intentions can lead to unintended and even tragic results. Additionally, we are concerned about legal liabilities and consequential. Financial impact that other communities around the country have incurred through their involvement with this program. For these reasons, we respectfully urge you to withdraw the Wells Police Department from the two eighty seven G program entirely. We believe that maintaining a clear distinction between local policing and federal immigration enforcement. Is paramount to ensuring the safety and well-being of all Wells residents. And preserving the strong relationships our officers have cultivated within the community. We are committed to continuing an open dialogue with you and the Wells Police Department on this critical issue. Thank you for your time and consideration. And it is signed sincerely founding members Democracy in Action, a newly formed network of concerned Wells residents. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak at this time? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to department updates. Uh, we have the Parks and Recreation Department with Eno Abai. Eno will invite you up. How are you this evening?
Thank you. I'm Tino Abai, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director. And is this, okay, this closed? Yep. So, uh, just an overview, uh, we're into the end of the F R I twenty five year. I guess it's kind of weird talking to a.
I don't.
Um, but I just wanted to kind of give a quick overview of everything that we've been offering and what we have. Coming up and what's been done. So, um, this year we offered over a hundred and twenty plus programs and some special events. Uh, we've had over twenty five hundred registrants, um, of which twenty two hundred, excuse me, twenty four hundred, instead of twenty five, yeah. Twenty two residents and a hundred and seventy three non-residents in our programs. So you see the majority of our programs are, uh, full residents. And out of that, we've had over twelve hundred males and eleven hundred females, so just pretty much swooped down those, so, uh, that's, that's nice. Um, we also, the rent department does facilitate the rentals of the town. And what we have is the Harbor Park that we rented out for weddings and different, uh, events there. We also rented out the activity center and the rec pavilion. And out of that, we've had the rec, the Harbor Park, which is Casino Pavilion, we've had over four hundred twenty four hours of rental there. The rec pavilion had around twenty nine. And for hours because we use that lot for our program, so there's not as much vacancy there. Um, and then the activity center. That's rented out. I didn't get the right mark of this because we've had four thousand eight hundred hours, but that's our programs are involved with that as well as. As, um, birthday parties and everything else that goes on there. Um, we've got, uh. We've got summer camp. We're getting geared up for that right now. We have over a hundred and seventy registrants right now at the summer camp. We filled our camps. We did hire our staff that we needed for that. Um, gearing up for that. We're excited for that. We started training, uh, for next week. Two weeks from now, rather. And, uh, with the high school graduates, we have, uh, a few scholarships that we'll be handing out to the, a few of the graduating seniors. We're excited about that. And, um, we've got the, uh, parking lot that's being finished at the, uh, rec park, which is being gut lined today, so that. Is completed and will be opened up probably in the next day or so. And, uh, we've got the pickleball courts and tennis courts that have been completed. Those have been opened up for a week now. We've got over forty memberships and we've got some drop-ins and, um. Some pick away, pick a weeks and pick a days that are signed up as well, so. Uh, excited about that. The basketball court is also going to be started the same time that the, uh, grown down tennis court, so. So we have a lot going on. We're excited about it and we're moving on, so. That's my update.
Great.
Before you go. Is it okay to ask questions?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. If anyone has any questions for Tina.
Could you go over a little bit of how, about how the rates for different things are, are achieved or, or changed?
Yeah, they've been changing.
I'm sorry?
Yes, they have changed a little bit. So what we've done is because the courts are. The courts cost you just over four hundred thousand dollars. We've, we've got to tear them all down, rebuild them. With that money. Around two hundred thousand dollars paid in taxation and the remaining two hundred plus thousand dollars is being paid through some funding and grants, our funding. As well as, um, enterprise, which is our comp that we raise these sports, and we raise money, or rather, with the fundraising efforts. Events and programs. So that money is part of that went towards the, the, the courts as well. With that, because it's so much money, we, like every other program, we do, um, charge for fees for that to use the courts. We did do a search. We went around the different towns around the southern Maine area as well as even northern Maine. Um, and compared what they offer for fees for the pickleball courts. In doing so, we have a nominal fee that we think is, is fair and actually lower than most around us. Of a hundred and thirty five dollars for a resident season, which starts and, well, it will start earlier next year, but. It'll start equal as soon as the weather sets, the courts will open, and it'll go until November. When the weather gets bad, we have to close them down. So. That being said, they, the season passed, you can go on the courts at any time. It's a first come, first served basis as far as any time. It's a first come, first served basis as far as any times that are outside of the open playtime. We do have an open playtime Monday through Friday from seven-thirty to ten-thirty in the morning, which means that you can come in and there's a group that comes in and they, you people that are familiar with pickleball, they have a rotation and you guys who play each other and they, you know, they, they work on the scales and different uh, levels, I know we're that, each other, so that, that's happening seven-thirty to ten-thirty. People that just want to come in and just play for the seven-thirty to ten-thirty slot, they can pay five dollars just to join that day for that time slot. If you want to come in and play for the day, you want to participate in that time as well as coming later on in the day, because we have until, you know, eight o'clock at night that you can come in and play, then you can get the date pass, which is ten dollars as a resident, uh, fifteen for non-residents. Uh, if you want a monthly pass, which is a parameter, you pick one day, it's four weeks from that point, then you get, um, residents will pay forty dollars for the month. Again, you can join in on a seven-thirty to ten-thirty slot, or you can come in and, um, play any other time on a first come, first served basis. Uh, we also had a weekly rate because we do have a tourist town, we have people that come up and visit, stay in campgrounds and whatnot. We have a weekly rate of twenty-five dollars for residents and thirty dollars for non-residents. Again, we set that parameter for the week that you're there and at the end, um, that's from, it, it's over and I set a daily rate in the open play. So if those were a race and then comparison to others, Ken Barth plays, uh, they, they charge, they have a hundred and seventy-five to residents for their season and they only have the three hours that they have open, excuse me, during that time under the waterhouse facility and that's what you pay for is a hundred and seventy-five for the whole season. We're paying a hundred and thirty-five and you can use it anytime during the day, with the exception of sometimes we'll have the courts used for lessons and, um, you know, different things that might come up. Um, but there's six pickleball courts and there's two tennis courts, and tennis courts are treated the same as the pickleball courts as far as the fee structure.
So I'm really looking for the procedure as to how the rates are developed and, and I'm, I'm not trying to pick on you, I'm just really trying to understand it. Um, because we have, like when code increased rates, we had about two months' worth of public hearings. Um, we had to decide how much ice was going to be charged for down at the harbor. Does, is that done just by your, your group or is it?
Yeah, just like every other fee that we have, over a hundred programs, we charge fees for, we develop those fees according to history and what we need to have, so we have, you know, whatever we have to expenses and that's how it develops.
I think my question really procedurally is why do other, all other departments of the town have to come before this board, but it doesn't seem like the rec does?
Well, that's, that's how we've always done that, but I've been hired to develop programs and.
And I'm not questioning you, you do a great job, I, I, I'm.
Well, no.
Yeah, I'm just not attacking this, this.
It's been, I've spent the thirty years that I've been here, never the department that I'm aware of, the departments do fold the fees for their departments, unless it's something special, if you wanted to become part of that, you wanted to come and set fees for the pickleball courts or something of that nature, that's something the town can decide. But I was given the task to, you know, work on the programs and work on the facilities and that's what we've done. Um, and we come up with the CNPs and whether, and we request for our budgetary items and, you know, and, you know, we saw that we need to charge a fee, a day, but that's how it works, so that is, is developed and we all.
So Scott, right, I think that it's probably on us if we haven't been recording that, so maybe we should put something on our, uh, calendar in future video workshops and discuss.
This is, do you see that we would be following?
It's interesting because I asked Tina, I said, tell me the history and it's for thirty-plus years, uh, which doesn't mean it's right. Which means that, would you like that so that those fees come to you for at least a review and the public can hear what those would be uh, going forward on programs? I don't know, logistically, you mentioned a hundred programs and how that might look like, we have an idea going into September, October, what that pricing might look like that we could share with the board for their comment?
For individual programs or for in general?
Probably.
Because every program is differently, is priced differently depending on how many weeks that something is off in. If it's a, you know, a league, if it's a special event, everything's different. So I would have to, you know, come back to that and.
My only word is, so.
Okay. So, I just gave you the reasoning. I'm just wondering if you have, you know, it would be nice if we just had a history, if this is, this is what it was, used to be and now it got increased because whatever, we have more people, you know, I mean, if you've already had several years that you've done this, it would be nice to see the trail to how you got here, I think, um, because we just haven't really seen that.
We can do that, okay.
My point is, I, there is a, I, I get what you're saying, but in the rec world, there is a, every time she has a program, they have to come to us to throw feet, we're going to be here a lot, you know what I mean, I'm not saying, I think the only thing that alarmed me and I'm living in the old days, I haven't played tennis in a while, you know, you used to buy the twenty-dollar key and that was good enough and you did it, it did alarm me when I saw the price, you did a good job explaining, you know, how others have done this. The, the two things I wonder about, one is, I, I would like to see a family fee personally.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't have, it's just my wife, but I'm just saying, I would like to see it for other families and, and two is, the only part I don't understand is, again, whenever we do anything, I, there's enforcement issues, right, so that the idea of enforcement, so like if, if I went to play Scott in, uh, I'd kill him, but if I wanted to play Scott's pickleball, uh, I, i- and if I had the pass and I said, I'm gonna play you, and he doesn't have that, does he, like, and it's seven o'clock at night, like, so I don't understand how we, like, how that all works, you know what I'm saying?
But we do have that too, right?
Okay.
I forgot to mention that, if you have a membership pass, you can bring a guest for five dollars.
Okay, all right.
For that, that day.
But how does it work, like, so you're not going to man this thing, you're not going to sit at this?
No, well, yes, that's true, part, part is, yeah.
Yeah.
One, um, so what we have is a key that's a code, you have a time of eight, so when you purchase a membership, whether it be, you know, you go to Hill Daily, you'll get a, a code assigned to you, a four-digit code, that would be valid for that time span that you sign up for, and then you go to the gate and punch in that code and then you'll be able to open the gate and, and access it, once that date passes, your code will lock up. Um, and if you're a member and you want to bring somebody as a guest, then that, then either you go on to your membership and then it'll be five dollars and you start playing.
Can we consider that fam, because I, I'm just thinking, do you, you have a bunch of people playing in your family, family of five or six people, you could take a hundred and thirty-five dollars for each person to go play pickleball, you know what I mean?
That's a real value.
It's, it, because it's becoming a very popular hobby as, as you know.
Yeah.
Um, so I just worry about families in town that, wow, I'd love to go play pickleball.
And I, my, personally don't, well, I'm not going to say that, um. I know that I'm supposed to help support the rec department with a kind of a self-sufficient, you know, this would be more towards a like a business. Um, these courts would fund fifty percent, wasn't tax-dense, but the other fifty percent is through all of these programs, fees and everything that's, that were enacted for fundraising efforts, et cetera. Um, so I don't have a problem with any kind of fee that, as long as it supports the programs and getting paid for, but we still have maintenance that we have to cover. You know, you got staff, or they do have staff, you asked that question, there's somebody there right now from seven-thirty to ten-thirty every day so that we have that, that, uh, open playtime that's in supervisor, can I say, and also there to help sell, take, uh, memberships and work with the computer and help people with that. Um, after that time, we are not manning the courts, but we do have security cameras that are out there. So I can see on, um, the, the security cameras, if I, if I see someone punching the code and trying to get in, it shows up all on my program that someone invalid, invalid, trying to get in, I can go back and look at that, see what happened. Um, so there's quite a bit of, um, eyes but not, you know, in, in person on that. Um, it's more than on our system, you know, this is a, like, someone might go in there and they want, um, let anybody in, yeah, they could do that, but I could see that on the camera and we could, you know, speak to them afterwards. Um, but certainly, you know, these, these courts are made for the community, I understand that and I'm not trying to be, you know, overly biased at all, that's why we compared it to other towns. Um, York has outdoor courts, they, they charge two hundred dollars for the season. And then these courts, all these courts, I mentioned, they have certain timeframes as an event, we are open all day, so. Um, so this is something I never forget to, we try to figure, there was better for us, the town, one thirty-five is supposed to run seventy-five and two hundred is, is, is a fair deal, that's, I, I think.
I think the sticker shop chain where it was, it, it was twenty and then it went to one thirty-five, and I have no business in the world, if there was a different stop between them, I, I, I don't play tennis or pickleball, but I will play.
Okay. We'll do it.
We had a key system for this time, it was seventy, it was thirty-five dollars for the key.
It was thirty-five.
It was thirty-five, that was very old, that was in two thousand and nineteen was the last time we did that. And then of course COVID hit and things stepped down and then the course was in bad shape when we were trying to get them rebuilt. So it took a while to get that money to get it rebuilt, it was six hundred thousand dollars back then at that time and I only had a hundred and fifty that was saved up for that, so then I went before the board and, and went before C I P and then, and that's how we were able to get another two hundred from the taxation and then we supplemented it now with enterprise money, so. Um, that's why the fees went up a little bit more than I expected because we're trying to help reboot that, these monies that were made for other programs wouldn't be these courts as well. Um, and we tried to put that with other things too, projects, the parking lots paid to enterprise fees. Now, there's a lot of different things that we, we supplement to try to help the tax office stay down. Um, so that's, that's where we're at, uh, but, um, yeah, I mean, trying to do the best we can to keep.
Tina, if my math is correct, you're about twenty-four weeks in a season? If, May through October. Um, I'm sorry, yeah, so you're about twenty-four weeks, so you're running ninety cents a week or for whatever, whatever we do, um. Because if you're one thirty-five, you're, you're knocking under a dollar. Okay.
Ninety-five cents an hour.
Okay.
I just want to say one final thing, I, I, over the years when we set the enterprise system up and everything and everyone felt that it was user paying, you know, for the programs and stuff, I think it's been pretty successful, honestly. I, I think for all of us, we just, just realized we just never really looked at how you did it. So, um, and just some information on the past and show it because it works, you've got the, you've got the fields, you've got the people, you're covering your programs, you cover, you know, it's, you know, I, I think all in all is working, but I think we're just looking at the process of how you come up with it.
Um, and, and the fees that we charge are nominal and in very comparison to other departments and so the fields, we even supplement money for that because we have to repair the fields and that's something that, you know, programs that we charge for soccer and lacrosse and any field sports, I mean, paying to play and some of that money, yes, a lot of it goes up to the program itself, but there's a little bit left over that gets part of this fund that helps maintain the fields and helps us with other things and that's.
Right, you've been expanding, you know, which is, yeah. Thank you.
Well, can we consider a family plan?
Yes. Yes.
I mean, just, I, I just, like I said, it has nothing to do with me, I don't, I don't have, it's my wife and I, but I just, I just think there's some families out there and that's a hefty price, it's going to be five, six hundred bucks for some people. You know, I, I'd just like to look at some kind of.
I, no, absolutely. Anyone else?
Great, thanks Tina.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have current agenda items. We have review and action on accounts payable and payroll warrants, any discussion? We have a motion?
Yeah. This was a new one. Um, I think. Move. Thank you. I move to sudden warrant dated June third, twenty twenty-five and the amount of one million twenty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-five cents. And the general assistance warrant dated June third, twenty twenty-five and the amount of three thousand eighty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second, all in favor? Four, zero, one extension, thank you.
You.
Yeah. All right. Next, we have update, discussion and action on committees, projects, issues, purchases and personnel. First is discussion and action on conveyance of the two thousand and six Army Bridge erection vote to York County, Maine.
Yeah, I can give you a little overview on that, um. Speaks for itself, you'll remember that York County, um, we are mooring their barge, their dredge here and, uh, they need a push boat. And so we happen to have this two thousand and six boat, it was, um, not in the best of condition. Uh, York County has invested, and I don't have the exact number, but somewhere around about the thirteen thousand dollars in it, knowing that we own it. Um, but what we have been discussing with them is the moorings of the dredge and if you choose to, uh, sell the boat to them, um, would help us to be able to have dredging done at no cost, certain amounts of that. Um, I can't tell you how much, but certainly that's part of what we're trying to work with them on is, uh, the goodwill of the town of Wells will come back to us, there's some dredging opportunities.
John, can I ask you a question on that?
Um, it's, uh, not a public hearing right now. Well, can, can you save it until a public comment?
If you don't make a decision yet.
We'll have to wait till a public comment.
Yeah.
Any discussion or more on this?
This field. Maybe both of them.
It is. Yeah, obviously, it is, as the, uh, Bill with Sam talks about, it reverts back to the town. Um, in a serviceable condition, if, at some point.
That's all.
If the existing dredge is owned by the county already, is that correct?
It's, it's, the dredge is owned by your county.
It is, okay.
And now, if we, if we vote on this tonight, there's going to be, I assume, some type of negotiation, you get some type of firm commitment from Cal?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Well, any further discussion? We have a motion?
I move to grant the conveyance of the two thousand and six Army Bridge erection board vote to York County, Maine and authorize the town manager to sign the agreement.
Second, all in favor? Five, zero. Thank you. Next, we have discussion and action to accept the Maine EMS Sustainability Grant Award for the Wells Fire Department. We have a chief. Oh, we've got a chief and assistant chief, all right. Awesome.
Good evening, um, we are basically here to ask, uh, for your, uh, ability to um, accept a fifty thousand dollar grant from Maine EMS um, for phase two of our Maine EMS Sustainability Program. The department would utilize about twenty thousand dollars of funding for health and wellness programs for the fire department and thirty thousand towards training and education. And I think, excuse me, you have the report in front of you, I don't know if you want me to go through some of this stuff, but, or even John to go through some of this stuff, but we can go through the details if that's what you'd like to see what we'd be using it for.
I think that, that it'd be beneficial for members of the public, so that'd be nice.
Sure. Um, so our health and wellness program, twenty thousand dollars, I can finally commit, um, for the building and implementation of the health and wellness program focusing on physical, mental and emotional health. The grant money for the initiative would be utilized to bring health and fitness specialists who are affiliated with fire EMS to our departments to des, to design fitness programs for each of our members as well as, um, the purchase of necessary fitness equipment. This can reduce potential injuries, promote healthy nutrition and promote positive and healthy stress management techniques. The money would also be utilized for the contracted services of behavioral health specialists to assist in the initial development and coordination of a behavioral health program. The EMS training and education of thirty thousand dollars, um, which includes tuition for at least one of our members to attend a paramedic course, tuition for up to three members to attend advanced M T courses and remaining funding for, um, advanced cardiac life support, um, pediatric advanced life support, um, pre-hospital trauma life support and, um, uh, in the advanced M T courses. The money would also be utilized for the aforementioned, um, approved card courses. The remaining funds would be utilized for mental health and wellness resiliency education in the event that a provider does not enroll in the paramedic program prior to our deadline of March thirty-first of twenty-six. The funding would be allocated to the approved card courses of mental health and wellness resiliency training. So, um, that's the, in the nutshell, I don't know if there's a more, you'd like to add to?
I don't, unless there are any questions or clarification on anything that, I don't know, we spoke about, you're happy to do so.
Any questions from the board? Sounds like a great opportunity.
Oh, we don't quit matching money with it, it just.
All right. Well, thank you both.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion?
I move to accept the Maine EMS Sustainability Grant Award in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for the Wells Fire Department.
Second, all in favor? Five, zero. Next, we have discussion and action on updates, personnel and committee assignments, resignations and issues. Um, Mike, you want to?
Sure, be happy to, um, I just want to welcome Dylan Putnam, um, to our Public Works Department. He's an equipment operator and I think it speaks volumes that, uh, Dylan comes with a fair amount of experience. Um, he worked previously for the city of Borum, the city of South Portland and, uh, a very fine corporation we worked with, Brex Corporation. Um, he has some great skills, he's already, um, found his home here in, in. Found his home here in in our Public Works Department, he's been here before, um. I know he did some work for the town previously, and I think everyone has embraced Dylan joining us, and I think he hopes to add to our team. So welcome Dylan.
Yeah, absolutely, he's, and I I've had the opportunity to see his enthusiasm and his work ethic, and he is very dedicated to his job. And and not just dedicated, but like I said, enthusiastic, he's happy to be there, happy to be doing the work, so.
That's nice to happen.
Alright, next, we have discussion and action to accept donations and requests. We have a one hundred dollar and fifty-five cent uh, donation from the Wells Rotary to the Wells Public Library for the purchase of library books. We have a sixty-three dollar donation from Jason Carter to the town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. Um, and then the following donations were received for the Founder's Park Community Center. We have a five thousand dollar donation from Catherine Kelly. We have a one hundred and twenty-five dollar donation from Richard and Christine Doherty. We have a one hundred and twenty-five dollar donation from Stephen Cynthia Walsh. We have a two hundred and fifty dollar donation from Cynthia Murphy. We have a one hundred and twenty-five dollar donation from Cassie Tibbets. We have a one hundred and twenty-five dollar donation from Bill and Anna Poops. We have a one hundred and twenty-five dollar donation from Denise Moser. We have a one hundred and twenty-five dollar donation from Deanna Caven. And we have a uh, one hundred and twenty-five dollar donation from Bradford Goodwin.
I move to accept the generous donations and write letters of thanks to the donors.
Second, all those in favor? Five, zero. Next, we have discussion and action to approve the minutes of the May twentieth, twenty twenty-five Selective Meeting, any discussion, any corrections that need to be made?
I move for approval of the May twentieth, twenty twenty-five Selectment Meeting Minutes.
Second, all in favor? Five, zero. Moving on, we have new business for the second time this evening, we have hope into the public. Uh, same feelings last time, we actually come up to the podium, state your name, please try to keep comments, maybe that's, hold up.
Well, I walk away, this is about the police boat, right?
That?
It's about the police boat. The one that you guys are getting rid of? Are you talking about the police boat? Introduce yourself, first case. Um, the the one that the town accepted years ago, so when Mike said the harbor, he calls it the pushboat. Is it the one that used to be the police boat?
I don't believe it is.
Okay, cause that came with all kinds of.
Yes, all of the, all the requirements associated with this boat have have uh, passed. And so we checked all of that before moving forward.
If I know that the police boat, we ended up with two of them.
Right.
And there was a list of stuffs. And it wasn't, I think, that one, to give it back, you're gonna give it back to the, uh. I'm for G D M.
Yeah, Mike and Chief Putnam both checked thoroughly to make sure that all the requirements for this boat had all basically expired.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stan Weeks, I'm a resident of the wealth branch. I'm back here, left here after being earthy of Maine, sixty years later, I'm back, brought back the place I grew up. Uh, so I'm still trying to figure out what this town is like nowadays. And I want you to know my sister put me up to this. Because uh, she asked me several weeks ago, what was new, and I said, well, I just got the new town budget. And I said, we're gonna be paying the town manager a hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. And she said, is Maine gone mad? She's watching too much TV, too much internet, anyhow, uh, she said, somebody needs to speak up about these issues. I said, well, I'm only asking a few questions. So, so, uh, first I got on the internet to see, what what account managers in this state of Maine, what are they expecting for? For income, and I find that the average is a hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars, going to the best, uh. Town information I can find. Um, so then I decided, well, knowing that information and I saw the range. I said, well, I'll ask two people who can help me out. Uh, one I, one I know fairly well, a town resident, and one of town officials. And I said, help me out with this town manager, I know he's relatively new, I know that. Uh, he came, when he came in, they budgeted a hundred and fifty-six thousand, they actually hired him at a hundred and sixty-six. And now they're talking about an increase of sixteen thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. So the first person, the resident said, well, we need to pay to be competitive. And I said, okay, but, but, I added my information about, uh, what I found on the internet. And I said, but he's he's gonna be at the top of the town manager's path in the state of Maine. And uh, this individual said, he's excellent. And I said, okay, so then I asked the town official, I was talking with this person about something else, and said, by the way. This town manager. And uh, the response was, well, we need to pay to be competitive. And I said, well, but competitive with what, with the top, with the top paid person? Uh, because York is right up there, a little one eighty now, and uh. The response was, he's excellent. At any rate, for not, for no other reason, I want you to know, people do read the budget, they do, they do look at this. It was interesting, the York panel manager, at least in the local paper. Uh, he said, yes, I'm getting, I'm getting a call up for this coming year, and he was almost embarrassed, he said, I didn't ask for it. He also didn't say he wasn't gonna take it. So we, I assume he is, I assume he's gonna take, I guess, the the main, the main reason I'm talking is, that. That to say, we're paying somebody to be competitive, when I see what the averages for the entire state. If we've got an excellent person, that's fine, but but to tell me, um, we're paying to be competitive. Isn't quite the story that I think, uh, we should be, we should be talking about, so, uh, I I have. I have no reason to believe he's not worth the money, but uh, to say he's just gonna be competitive, doesn't seem to be quite the full story. Anyhow, um, I always tell people. I don't have to have my way, but I have to have my say, so thank you for listening.
Would anybody else like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the town manager's report, Mike.
I think better do this than well, huh? Uh, about twenty-five minutes worth then, um, I just wanted to let everyone know, the uh, facility study is advancing quite nicely. Um, it is, uh, would say in the final stages of the data gathering and will now be moving toward the design phase. So we'll actually see some ideas of space needs projected over the next uh, twenty years, twenty-five years. Um, and right now, we're anticipating some of that will be unveiled on August nineteenth at a boarding. Um, the new parking lot behind the public safety facility, um, has been paved, lighting installation is scheduled to soon follow. Um, and that's, that's gonna take on a a big asset for us for parking at the public safety building. Uh, this is Code Officer Appreciation Week, and some of the uh, colleagues in the town hall took some time to do some nice. Uh, decorations and some treats for our code enforcement personnel. Um, so far, they've issued five hundred and sixty-two building permits that have been issued, including fifty new single-family homes thus far. Um, finance, I can't say enough about the good work that's happening there, the sales of the multi-use pass are ongoing. Um, there is high activity because it's certainly not only the passes, but the new license plates that are coming out now. So that's causing a fair amount of foot traffic, but I will say the Beach Pass Express has worked very effectively. Uh, with helping people move through the acquisition of beach passes. Fire department's very busy, five hundred and ninety-two calls thus far this year, including thirty-seven runs this past week. The lifeguard program is really looking good, we've had thirty-seven applicants, twenty-seven members, um, have attended tryouts. And we know that at least twenty-five, um, confirmed people will be confirmed as lifeguards, up from nineteen last year. Where you remember, we had to actually not have lifeguards on some sections, and I think that's a great, great credit to the staff, um. The lifeguard captain who's joined us, I think, is helping in the recruitment, um, so a lot of good things happening there. Mike York's doing a great job, as always, down at the um, harbor. Um, and they, they, I'm not gonna go into all the details, but they've done a really nice job down there, and we've got more boats moving in. Um, I think that's operating extremely well. Um, Chief Putnam's, uh, talked about the big, uh, beach parking lots are open, they're going very smoothly, the park mobile app that you heard about. Is working very effectively, I understand that about fifty percent of our visitors are using the park mobile app. I had the occasion to use that, uh, Friday night in the Gunquay on the park mobile app, uh, for eight dollars an hour. Um, so, so dinner was a little more costly, um, but I got to park with park mobile. Um, as uh, Tim mentioned, the senior parade is coming up tomorrow night, graduation is for Sunday. Um, parking wreck, um, Tina mentioned the forty pick, uh, members that signed up for pickleball. Steve Buckley over in part, uh, Public Works crews have started, uh, tree work on Coles Hill Road between Branch and Route One. Work will continue through Thursday with a brief road closure scheduled for Thursday. On Friday, tree work will move to Bragman Road and Perry Oliver Road with traffic, um, being temporarily diverted as needed. On that, in that area, uh, ditch work is happening, which we know helps to maintain our roads. Um, that's happening now on Furbish Road and roadside mowing continues. Um, we have twenty outstanding business licenses the town clerk is working on securing. And the upcoming election is a week from today, June ten. And, um, we also welcome library assistant to position, um, and that's Sharon Clark. And Sharon comes to us from Good Old Library in Stanford, um, and she's replacing Sally Whitaker. Sally moved on for other opportunities, I believe, for some family, uh, needs. And as I mentioned, the June newsletter that Rebecca turned out, um, extremely good, um, the piping poker program is moving to. Um, some new technology with ID cards and, uh, some recognition of who those folks are, so that they're able to move more effectively along the beaches. And, uh, work with our residents and our, and our pokers. Um, so, many good things, I was very enthused to see the Route One corridor study. I know that we're going to be, um, in that area, probably forty million or more dollars. Um, Marty had shared with me. That that project is the largest project that Maine DOT, um, has worked on with the exception of their mega bridges. Um, and so, pretty, pretty moving, um, and as a generational opportunity. Uh, I'm very excited for the town, and we're doing a many things that, um, maybe other communities aren't doing right now, but, uh. I think we're ahead of the curve in so many areas, so, good stuff.
Great, thank you, Mike.
What's that?
I said, pretty good train, hundred eighty thousand for forty million, thank you.
Good boys. Did you have something to say, Tim?
Yeah, I thought. Mine was a joke, but. Kind of ruined, uh, I thought the piping pokers were getting IDs, I didn't realize.
Has there been anything new on the cell phone, the mini cellphone? It's a little bit, it's in a bit of a pause, and uh, the the challenge with that is right now, the cellphone providers, um, have. Put a pause on what they're doing with the streetlight application, I think they're looking a little bit more at the five G cans. We've seen some of those, I believe some deployed on Atlantic, maybe. Um, I noticed some cans down in the Agunkord area, uh, but it it may be an opportunity for us to think. Um, if if that cellphone technology on the streetlights does not go forward, and there is no community other than York looking at that right now that I'm aware of. Um, we may be having to look at some other alternatives to take the burden off of the high use that we have in the summer.
Thank you.
Well, with Scott's question, I guess this is a good time to segue into, uh, select board comments, either subcommittee reports or individual select board member comments. Qualify that under as well.
I, but.
Yeah, well, yeah, select board, actually, on the select board, Kathy?
Yep, yeah, but I just wanna say something first, I just, um, I've had the chance to finally get to a, um, personnel, uh, uh. Uh, advisory committee, meeting, um, a great group of people, they are very good thinkers, and they're putting it together and. Getting ready to, uh, publish the, the new handbook, was just going through the changes and the things that they've done to the last, I was, it was very impressive. Um, with how thorough they are, and and I just thought it was a great thing, I, I didn't realize so much was going on. In the background with that, so I was really glad that I've obviously unheard it.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up, um, kudos to the, um, PAC, um, Personal Advisory Committee. Uh, Mike Livingston serves on that, and many of our employees participate in as far as coming in, offering comment. Um, that is a personnel handbook that I think will, um, be really solid for us for many years to come. Our pledge is that we're going to go through it annually, so updates are not so grandiose. Um, and I think it will rival most any handbook that we can come up with, I know the folks that are on the PAC have some extensive experience, and every one of them have. Spoken very highly about the quality of that handbook. So you'll be seeing that fairly soon, for your review and approval.
Well, I, I'll say something, um. Three years ago, the community chose to put me on this board, um, which means that, uh. This this term is coming to an end, and I just want to thank the community, it's been an absolute privilege. Uh, there is a election next Tuesday night, so. Don't care who you vote for, but please get on and take part in the process, please vote.
Here, alright. Well, with that, we're gonna move on, we have adjournment.
I made emotionally adjourned.
Second, all in favor? Five, zero, great, thank you, Ed. Everybody next time.